Public comment. So we do have one person who signed in. This is Patrick.
Do you have any over there?
Good evening. Okay.
My name is Sheila. It's Patrick. I live here in the district of Burlington. And I'm here to request that this committee discuss the open meeting law violation, which you have as an executive session item on your agenda. I'm requesting that you discuss it in public. To clarify, on August 1st, I attended this committee's retreat. On the 12th of August, I emailed the chair and I asked for a copy of the meeting notes. My email said exactly, "I, Mrs. Lee, am going to request a copy of the meeting minutes for the 8-1 school meeting meeting. Below is information pertaining to open meeting law requirements. Please forward the minutes to this email address." I included the open meeting law information that says minutes of an open session, if they exist, and whether approved or in draft form should be made available upon request by any person within 10 business days, within 10 calendar days. And I sent it to the line. I never received any response. On August 29th, I resent the email and then I filed an open meeting law complaint. On September 3rd, I received a draft copy of the meeting notes with the recording secretary, Ms. Fiznichol, Nicole Stoudt. I apologize if I said your name incorrectly. Also on 9/3, I received an email response from the chair. She said, "Sheila, I would like to apologize for not responding to your emails. I spent July and August in a small town meeting. My husband and there was no internet and phone service. I emailed this body. I did talk with the superintendent on Mondays of each week and I was able to keep up with most things going on at the school." I had also asked for some other information. She said she would find out about that information and she believed that the minutes would be sent to me. So your agenda item for this executive session does not require confidentiality at all. It is a simple, open meeting law complaint due to the failure of this committee to follow the law. So I'm requesting that you discuss this in an open meeting and not go into an executive session for it. Thank you.
Thank you. We have been advised by our attorney. We've been advised by our attorney to have it in executive session. Okay, Kevin Blue.
Hello.
Mr. Blue, what's the super secret signal for you to switch slides? You tell me which you.
I'll give you a look.
Okay.
Thank you.
I also have hard coffee as well. So thank you for having me here tonight. Just wanted to talk about the summer programming that we just finished up. It was another record-setting year. A lot of great things, so I'd like to be able to share that with you. It was also our 10th anniversary. So I don't know what you get for 10th anniversary, but we started in 2016, this iteration of summer programming. There were previous other activities, sports clinics and things like that. But we sort of tried to put together a comprehensive program in 2016. So if you look at the second page, just a variety of photos from some of the activities that we had here. Volleyball, drawing, crochet, cheering, visual arts and baseball, just a sampling of some of them. Some of the highlights, for the second straight year, we set a record with registrations. We had 650 registrations. We primarily target middle school students, but we offer for a variety of ages. We offered 25 different programs. You'll see them listed in a few slides. Thirty-two staff members, including many Shawshien Tech alums. I think that speaks. I know that you met a lot of new teachers that are Shawshien Tech alums earlier this evening. Many of these alums come back and work. Some of them are on staff, some of them are in the community. We also had more than 100 students volunteer and participate as workers, counselors and volunteers. And we had six different sports teams run clinics and they raised nearly $18,000 for their program. So just tremendous there. A wide variety of offerings. You see the lists here. New offerings this past year, softball clinic. Coach Heinz put together a softball clinic. We also had Introduction to Cosmetology. That sold out in hours. We offered two different sessions, morning and afternoon, and that was sold out, I think, by 10:00 a.m. of the day registration opened. You see that we focused a lot of vocational specific offerings as well as some other offerings of interest to the community. But again, 25 for a variety of ages. Next slide. None of this happens without the teachers and the coaches. They're simply the best. You walk around here in the summer and you see these students engage. If you remember the weather in late June, early July, literally 100 degrees. And Coach McCarthy told me it was the hottest week he's ever had in baseball clinic and it was also his best attendance he's ever had. That says something in this day and age when these students are out there, coming out there. Coach Briarly put together a misting tent out there. It's just amazing. And you know, I say these to the coaches, you see them out here working with 16, 17, 18-year-old students during the season and then they're out here with seven, eight, nine-year-olds and just how they can adapt and interact. And then you see our students, our current students out there, and that's really the secret sauce, these students that are out there interacting with these young people. But it's just amazing. These people are simply the best. Also, a shout out to the aquatics department and Jay Tillsley and his well-trained lifeguards. Especially in the summer, it's nice when they can go and spend an hour in the pool, cool off and relax. I know aquatics also had a very busy summer with lessons. And again, shout out to the alumni who come back and work on summer. Talked about the coaches, there were 459 attendees specifically for the sports clinics out of 650. And again, more than 100 current students, they just show up. They hear that their shop is hosting and they just show up. They want to be a part of it, whether it was DVC, cosmetology, internet and business. It's just amazing. And also the maintenance department. I know that Tony has talked about how busy we were in the summer and all the different projects and we're able to all coexist, work around each other. And I just appreciate that flexibility. I know enrollment, I broke it down both by town and actually by state. We draw from two states, 26 different towns, and I think that speaks to our reputation. I happen to reside in Peabody and one of our College App students, I quickly noticed, was from Peabody. And I said, you know, "How'd you find out about us?" The young girl's aunt lives in Burlington, saw it online, reached out to her niece, met her first day here and she was here all six days for the College App course. You look at Littleton and Chelmsford, this is the Briarly and McCarthy connection. The McCarthy's have six children, they drew 13 different people from Littleton. The Briarlys, Joel worked the baseball and the softball clinic and his wife Jessica taught the College App class and just word of mouth in the community. So we also have a lot of children of staff members and their relatives that go. Shannon Becker, a longtime member of the English department, her daughter came for the College App class all the way from Norwood. So it just speaks to the reputation of what we have here, the affordability of our offerings. We want to make sure that we offer great programming that's affordable to the members of our community. So if you break down, you see the enrollment, how it's grown every year. Take out COVID, but you see that tremendous growth. We open our registration at 6:00 a.m. and Tony knows, he gets emails from me and updates, you know, "8:00 a.m. Hey, Tony, we have 200 and something applications already." We sell out many of our programs within, by 8:00 a.m. and to the majority of our programs are sold out. It's great to see. And again, we rely on word of mouth, social media for our advertising. So just tremendous response there. The goals of summer programming are very simple, four things. We want to provide quality programming for students in our district, anywhere from grades one to 11, focusing on grades five to eight especially. We introduce middle school students to Shawshien for marketing and recruitment. We maintain a neutral to positive revenue structure and we also provide fundraising opportunities for our sports teams. Okay? Next slide, I think speaks to the impact on recruiting. I got these numbers from Andy Pigeon and his administrative assistant, Kristin Euston, were able to get me these numbers. We had 527 total completed applications for our current freshman class. Seventy-two percent of those applicants attended either summer programming or Project Explore. And a shout out to John Morrison and the Project Explore program. Again, he draws huge numbers as well and it's just a shout out. I think it just goes to prove, if you get students to our campus, they will want to go here. And if you look at the numbers of our 353 current freshmen, 59% either attended summer programming or Project Explore. I have a sophomore student, he walked in for a state. "I know you. Two years ago, I was here for summer programming." So you see those connections that are made. The next slide, again, more statistics, 96.2% describe their programming as excellent or very good. Ninety-nine point something percent would recommend the program to a friend. I send out a survey to, at the conclusion of all of our offerings and we get tremendous response. And again, I love the comments. If you've looked through, my daughter has done this for two years and really enjoys learning about Shawshien's offerings and thinking about her future. We have parents that are looking, saying, "I want my student to sort of be exposed to vocational ed. I hear a lot about it. I'd like them to try and see it in the summer." My son has been coming to this camp since he was old enough to, he was excited to find out he has one more year. He loves it so much, he asked if we could cancel our vacation in order to us attend a second week. Just again, these are the words of the parents. And again, first time doing camp at the tech, my son had a blast, wants to come back next summer. All right, you see some of the others, they speak about our coaches, our teachers and our students, our facility and what they offer. And again, we're already starting to plan for 2026. Ariel Zern, as part of her work with her new teachers, talks to them about these offerings, you know, "So maybe we can get someone who'd be interested in offering something else or something new." But just couldn't be prouder and I just appreciate all the support from the district. And again, I can't speak enough about coaches and teachers in the summer and it's just tremendous.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Consent agenda. Report bills in payroll, how education and cam education law, rule of minutes, June 17th, June 26th, August 1st and August 28th.
I'm going to march your man to chair when you approve the consent agenda.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Reposed, unanimous vote.
I'm the superintendent.
All right. I would like to start, in front of everybody, there should be the current year-to-date spending piece. I will acknowledge there are some categories here that appear to be deficit spending. We are still going through a lot of the salary line items and making sure that stuff is being pulled from the correct place. Our two consultants have been working on that the past week or so. Again, when this is updated, I will share the updated version with you. We are, I think, on solid footing for most of these accounts. So when you see, when you see these accounts that are overdrawn, all of those are salary line items. And again, it's just digging through and seeing where those particular items were charged to in that budget and making sure that we make adjustments. Again, for those of you that are on the Budget Subcommittee, you'll remember the kind of timeline that we talked about in the spring. We plan to have information for the October School Committee meeting. The Budget Subcommittee should meet earlier in October to bring recommendations forward. The plan is to zero out all of those salary line items. Some of them are overfunded, some of them are underfunded and we want to have a handle on what exactly is left so that we know moving forward into the school year where we stand or if we have to, you know, if we have to find some additional funding or if we're going to have some funding to help with some of the other costs that we're going to incur during the school year. So that is coming up. It is, it is a work in progress at this point in time. I think we are making headway on it, but it is, it is something that will take, take a little bit longer to get cleared up. We just encumbered the first payroll, not last Friday, but the Friday before, so we had to wait for that. We had to wait for all the teachers and the paras and everybody to be back in the building. What we typically do in that first payroll is we'll encumber their salary for the school year so that we know we have the money set aside to pay everybody through the end of June. So again, we had to wait for that to happen first and now we're working through that process of identifying what got pulled from where and where things were budgeted and just kind of cleaning up and crosswalking, for lack of a better term, to make sure that all that stuff is aligned properly. So more information to come. It will come to Budget Subcommittee for their October meeting and then hopefully we have a recommendation for the full committee to consider on October 28th. I know, I do apologize, my intent was to get this out with the packet. I actually didn't get it until after the packet had gone out. So my apologies for people not having it ahead of time to look at. And I will, I will go into my update and then if people have, if people want to look at that while I'm going through the update, if we have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them. All right. Enrollment, I'm happy to improve, happy to report, the enrollment has improved by about 30 students. We started the year with 1,294, we ended last year with 1,265. If you look at those numbers, you can still, you can see we still have a small senior class, we still have a small junior class. So again, we've talked about this trend the past few years. Those are, those are a couple of bubbles, if you will, there in there that we have to work our way out of there. We have brand bringing in between 350 and 360 each year to try to build up and make sure that we get our enrollment numbers up over the long term. We did backfill as many grade 10 spaces as possible. We went back to last year's waitlist and contacted any parents that had students that were on the waitlist to see if they were interested in any of the programs we had openings in. When we exhausted that list, we also opened admissions back up for the class of 2028, I think they are. And we had a couple more kids that showed interest and were brought in. I said, I think, all total, we brought in either five or six sophomores to kind of back those holes. You can see, I mean, if you look at these numbers, Bedford had, has 21 ninth graders enrolled with us. I think that's, that might be the largest number we've ever had from Bedford. So there's definitely a trend up there from that community. Burlington's freshman class, freshman numbers are up to 54, which is the first time in a long time they've done that high. So we are seeing some shifting, you know, where it was historically heavy with Bill Ricka and Wilmington and Tewksbury. That seems to be kind of evening out a little bit more. But overall, enrollment is up and I think that's a positive sign for us as we move forward and that trend hopefully continues. Co-op update. So this is, these are the students that started the end of last year as juniors on co-op or potentially went out over the summer or have started early in September with the school year. So 17,133 total hours were to date. 117 students, which amounts to 39% of the senior classes participating in co-op. As all of you know, that number tends to, tends to grow as we get into the school year and kids get back in and get settled and more kids become eligible, you know, as their, as grades shift and attendance shifts, they, they start to go out to work. Supporting 104 local employers, that, that kind of seems steady for us. You know, we're usually somewhere between 105 and 115 local employers that we support through co-op. It's not always the same people, but it seems like it kind of balances out and it seems to be our sweet spot. And then $275,972 of gross earnings to date. This report was polled, I think, on the 15th, so it is, I mean, it's always going to be a week or two behind when, when we report in the end of the school committee. Breakdown of our co-op students are out. We have two students from Bedford, 45 Bill Ricka students, seven from Burlington, 26 from Tewksbury, 37 from Wilmington. And like I said, it's 117 out of our 301 seniors are participating, so that works out to be just about 39% of the senior class. And hopefully we see that number continue to, continue to climb through the school year. Most of us were down at the new staff meet and greet before the meeting, but I did include slides. There's some people on here that were unable to attend tonight, but again, I just wanted everybody to know. We did, we did talk about, we've had some turnover the past couple of years. Looking in the next couple, the next two or three years, I think that trend's going to continue. We have a lot of people that kind of came in at the same time, we have a lot of people that are retiring at the same time. So I don't think that these numbers are going to drop significantly in the next couple of years. But Ken Keppel, who is a Shawshien alum, is our new automotive technology teacher. Anthony Urbannick, who is a Shawshien alum, is our new carpentry teacher. Nicole Williams is teaching science. Nicole joined us from, from Bay Path in Charlton. Andrea Fiori is our new cosmetology instructor. Harold Sanchez will be teaching electronics and engineering for us. Alexandra Salunas is our new English language development ELD instructor. Richard Frank is joining us in the health assisting department. Julian Shannon is also in the health assisting department. Julian came to us from Greater Lawrence. John Pedro is one of two new HVAC instructors. Joe Savino joined us from, from Greater Lawrence as well. And Keith Murphy, who was a longtime Ed Tech employee, actually was, was our school committee representative and recorded meetings for the past, well, since I've been here, has decided, actually did decide to take a position teaching in our ISSN shop. So Keith has kind of moved in a different direction and we have a very able stand-in in Mr. Rego tonight with us, so. New staff, new roles, continued Megan Crowley is our new math, math teacher. She came to us from all damn high. Nicole Fowler, excuse me, also teaches math. Nicole came to us from Keith Tech. Lisa Morrison joined us from Bedford Public Schools as a science teacher. We have a new SRO this year. Officer Crook became Sergeant Crook and moved on to some, some different pastures and different opportunities. So Greg Michelisi has joined us as the new SRO. Joe Navarro has been hired to be a paraprofessional in 501, which is the counseling office and the dean's office. Joe was here prior to last year on a grant. And again, that was a, that was a position that, we had some turnover in our paraprofessionals, so we kind of utilize a position in a different way. Mike Leek, same thing. Mike was hired as a paraprofessional in construction programs. He will work, you know, he'll work in all of the programs, then the carpentry, electrical, plumbing, masonry and HVAC as needed to support the staff down there. Haley Pfaff, who was our main office staff person, I don't like the term greeter, but so Haley had decided to take a job as a paraprofessional. That is the lifeguard slash pool para position that had been going, I believe, since COVID that we have budgeted to make sure that that came back this year. So Haley is settling into that, that role. And Casey Magna is our new health assisting paraprofessional. And then new staff, new roles for clerical. Most of you know Matt Nicole Stoudt, who's my new assistant, new assistant in my office, who's here with us tonight. Brittany Ferguson moved over to be the assistant in the principal's office. Kristin Euston stepped into Brittany's old role, supporting our admissions director. Jill Patton-Petersen, we hired to work in guidance. That is the role that Kristin had, had, had left, had vacated. Elizabeth Kinchen is the new main office representative. She's the person, the face that you see when you first come in the building and sign in. Marie Kelly has been hired as the administrative assistant for the business office. And then Jennifer Ulette joined us towards the end of last year and I don't, I don't think I ever kind of like formally introduced or announced her, but she is Bob Lawler's assistant in the facilities department and has done a great job down there, streamlining and making that department more efficient so that, well, we weren't able to hire, we weren't able to find another maintenance tech. She is really freeing up a lot of time for the, for the guys that work down there by helping out in organizing and structuring and scheduling things for them. So we've realized some pretty solid efficiencies out of adding her down there as well. New staff, new roles, directors and chairs. Mike Hurley is our director of vocational technical programs. He did step in for Dave Norkowitz when Dave retired at the end of last school year. Jeff McGrath is our inaugural director of curriculum instruction and assessment. Those of you that know Jeff, he's been introducing himself as the director of the CIA, so he's having a little fun with the role. I will say Jeff has been absolutely dynamite in that role. Jess and I had worked towards having this role over the past couple of years and we're, again, able to kind of restructure some of the administrative piece and bring this on. He has done more than I have expected and I know Jess is very happy with the way that he stepped into the role and the things that he's already been able to do. So we look forward to nothing but great things coming out of that. Joel Briarly stepped up. Jeff was our math department chair. Joel Briarly has stepped into that role. Kelly Corrigan, who's one of our ISSN instructors, is the manufacturing cluster department chair. Again, that's a new role for Kelly this year. And then Allison Ulette is the transportation and product development department chair. So both Kelly and Allison have taken on some, some new responsibilities this year. CAF and daycare, I don't want to forget, I honestly believe that these are probably two of our hardest working departments in this building when you look at what they do day in and day out with serving, you know, 1,300 lunches and taking care of, you know, 30 or so offspring of our staff members. And sometimes we don't always, I don't always recognize them, but Maureen Griffin Stone has stepped into the role of site coordinator. That's something that they had negotiated in their, in their last contract. So she's doing more paperwork and organization down there in the CAF. Patty Perry stepped up and took the position as lead cook. Darcy McCollie is our assistant cook. And again, those, all three of those are new roles within the CAF this school year. Lynn Amico has joined us. She came on board. Brandy Daly and Brianna Potty have all joined the crew down there and I know they're all working hard to, to deliver, you know, quality lunches to our students day in and day out. And then Jenna Nelson, who is also a Shawshien grad, joined our daycare staff down there to start the school year as well. So we've got a lot of people. And as the principal had said in the, in the meet and greet earlier, we started interviewing probably the first of March and it went right through, through July, pretty much, before, before we had everybody in place, so. MSBA update. Again, I will continue to update this timeline as we meet just to keep people informed on where we're going and what we've already done. Our initial compliance certification has been signed and submitted to them. It went in on August 22nd. The school building committee forum is due the 30th. That's on our agenda for later tonight to vote and finalize that and that will get submitted and that'll, that'll be another item off our checklist. The Chapter 74 Vocational Technical Education viability document and the educational profile questionnaire are currently being drafted by Principal Cook. Vocational Director Hurley and Academic Director Johnston, they have gone to, I've seen a draft. I actually met with Jess yesterday. We went through some stuff and kind of clarified some things. My intent is to bring that to the curriculum subcommittee in early October to have them review, provide feedback, update, whatever you want to say. And that will need to, that will need to be voted on at the October meeting. Both of those documents are due October 30th, so it's going to be a quick turnaround on those, but I think we have everything in place. The drafts I saw were probably 95 or 98% complete. It was just a few small adjustments that we were going to make to them, so I think we're in good shape there. The enrollment questionnaire, I actually finished, I believe, this morning and submitted. So we are, we're moving forward with that. The routine and capital maintenance plan, Bob Lawler and I had an initial conversation this morning. We're going to, we're going to go through and see exactly what they're looking for in that report. That's not due till January, so we have, we have a little bit of grace there. And then the feasibility study vote according to MSBA's timeline, we have to have done and in place by April 28th, 2026. I will say I did get some positive news from MSBA on Friday afternoon. I had a conversation with our representative and she said that we can apply for a 30-day extension, which would push us till May 28th of 2026, which would allow us which would push us till May twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-six, which would allow us to do this funding vote as a warrant article item at all of the annual town meetings versus trying to go through the process and request special town meetings and all those things. So I don't have the official response from them yet, but we did submit the request. We had to do a little research and provide them with all of the meeting dates. You know, and again, a little, a little blurb about why we were asking for the extension. So I will keep everybody updated. I'm, I'm super hopeful that that gets, if that gets pushed, that does make this, I think, a much easier lift for all of us to try to, I think it's easier to put this on as a warrant article and ask, ask for funding that way versus trying to have it as a standalone article that we bring out to the communities. Update on district treasurer. The posting closed September fifteenth, which a week ago, week and a half ago. I don't have the exact date in my head. We do have two candidates. In talking to my counterparts at other vocational schools, they were blown away that we actually get two people to apply for the role because a lot of them have been struggling to find somebody to fill the role. I know the information was sent to the audit and budget subcommittee, or at least the chairs. I don't know if it was both committees or not. So at this point, I think, I think, you know, whether those two committees come together formally or however you guys want to do it, make a decision about, do you want to bring both candidates in? Do we want to do a formal interview process? So I, I guess I'm going to, I'm going to pass the ball back to the two chairs to.
Are they retired people?
Uh, no, actually neither one of them is. Both of them are actually CPAs.
So what is this part?
It is, yeah, yeah. It's, it's like one day a week kind of a rule. So, yeah. And I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to disclose backgrounds because people will be able to put two and two together and figure out who the candidates have. We do have two applicants and, you know, again, hopefully that, that process will move forward quickly and we get somebody on board to fill that role. I think that's also going to help us with reconciliation piece and all of those things that we need to do to make sure that we're, we're double checking, cross checking all of the things and make sure that everything is entered correctly and in the response. Questions?
I have a question. Five twenty-eight, twenty-six date. That's the date everything has to be voted on. It has to have already passed through.
Yes, yeah. It's, it, which is currently April twenty-eighth, but hopefully they'll give us, hopefully they'll give us the extension. Yes, yeah.
And that feasibility study or that piece, is that just to get budget for the study?
Yes.
And do we know what that?
One point five million dollars.
Okay. From five times?
Yep.
So we're going to go into our communities asking for better?
No, because it'll be, so when we divide up capital, we typically do, everybody pays ten percent and then it's based on a per student ratio.
Okay.
My recommendation for this is that we just do a strict, straightforward per student ratio. So it's going to vary from, I mean, Bill Ricker is going to have the biggest burden on that. But then if we look at the percentage of enrolled students and break it out, I think it'll have, you know, it'll, to me, it'll be more of a fair way to do it. But again, that's for the committee to decide. They want, if we want to follow the strict capital process, we can do that too. It's going to, I mean, that'll, that'll pump up Bedford's contribution a little bit, but it'll also even out some of the others.
Okay.
We'll have to talk about that more.
We are, we are hoping, but we don't know because as our current budget goes further, if we can take a little bit of the money to take some of the assessments off of the different cities in town, but we won't know that until, you know, we're welcome to the school year.
And we're going to, we're going to try our best to get E and Ds certified as soon as we possibly can as well. Now, again, I don't know what that balance will come back at. I don't have any sense of that, but that may be another thing where we can, you know, if we, if we can knock a third of that off, I mean, I think that's, that's a different conversation than going out and asking progress on that role, how that funding role.
And also they might get some money back from the MSBA.
Yeah, that won't, that won't come back for a couple of years.
No, I know, but like they, you might get somewhere.
Yeah.
You did mention, you have already spoken to all the town managers.
Yep, I had all the town managers in last week. We had a meeting, yeah. And, and that was part of, that was before I had heard about the potential for the extension. So the conversation was around, what, what does this process look like? If we have to call a special town meeting, what is, what is that impact going to be? So we, we had a little bit of heart to heart.
Did you meet with them all together or?
Yes.
Oh, nice. Oh, good.
Yeah, yeah, four, four in person and we have one join us via Zoom. Yeah.
How do they seem about Tony?
Okay, I mean, I, I wouldn't say that they, you know, they weren't super exuberant about having to find money to fund the feasibility study. But I mean, all of them in relatively recent history, for the most part, have done projects or have ongoing projects so that, you know, they kind of understand that this is the process. We also had, Ron and Taran and I had Bill Ricker Finance Committee here last Thursday night to do a tour and to see the facility. And I mean, you know, I, I get it. I think all of you get it. You know, their thing is, you know, like, oh, you know, we're, we're building a new DPW in town. We're building a new senior center. We're building a police station. We're building a middle school. We're building a, and we have all these conflicting interests. So I mean, I think as we move through this, you know, making people aware of, you know, what is the cost impacts? What is that shakeout to by community? You know, and just being honest and upfront about, you know, this is, this is what this is going to look like. And again, I, you know, we, we talked about this with the finance committee last week. You know, I'm not, not trying to threaten anybody or naysaying anybody, but we're ended up spending some money here one way or another. You know, everybody has been part of the conversations, you know. If we have to replace the forty-five rooftop units and sprinkle this building and fix the, you know, the handicap ramps and do all, I mean, you're, you're talking tens of millions of dollars that would have to either be bonded or go out for an override vote or, you know, be part of the capital budget spread out over a period of time. So I mean, you know, I, I think that needs to be part of the conversation. And to me, the best way to do that is to do this feasibility study. We're going to have professionals come in here who do this for a living, who will assess this place from, you know, the, the lowest pipe that's buried in the ground to the peak of the roof over the gym. And they'll tell us everything in between that needs to be replaced, updated, brought up to code, whatever it is. And then we'll have, you know, from everybody I've talked to, you usually get somewhere between ten and fifteen options. This is what a renovation would look like to your current space. This is what a renovation addition looks like. This is, you know, here's some proposals for new facilities. And I know it's a lot of money to spend to get that information, but I, I, I think it's, you know, it's worth having that to know exactly where we want to go and how we want to.
I mean, again, you know, our town, I mean, it's like our high school's gotten turned down like twelve times. So you basically can go through this process and you pay that feasibility, which is people have to be educated. And to your point, you can, school can cover some of it. You basically can try to get some of the money back, but it's like, you know, you could be on the hook for the full boat. So at least in this project versus like our high school or other, you know, projects within town, you are getting that benefit to get so, it's painful, but I mean, at the end of the day, and to your point, there is probably some, there is a lot of structure in that process that does help. I mean, it does, it's painful, but you know, probably at the end of the day gives you a better school.
Anything else? You still going?
Nope, I'm good. Thank you.
Just on that district treasurer, what's the timeline that we, that's not a question for you, I just work for our committee. Where are we looking to, you said as soon as possible?
Yeah, I, I, I didn't really have a timeline. I thought that was kind of, I think that's from, I would kick that back to the group to see. I mean, I personally, I think the sooner the better, but I also don't want to rush people. People have lives and other things, so I, I get that too.
Yeah, I would agree that the sooner the better always has to be. They'll really, and the members will really meet and talk about that too.
Yeah, I, I totally agree Charlie. Do we want to bring both candidates in?
That's up to you guys.
I'm not, I'll let you talk to Charles.
Will the resume share with the whole?
I know they'll send to the chairs. I don't know if we'll send to the whole, we could, I can have, Nicole can easily send it to the whole committee if people want.
Yeah, like me and Patty, did you get it? Or me and Patty, is the other?
It might have just gone to the chair. That's, yeah. I think that was me. I think I said send it to the chairs and see how they, how they.
I'm okay with, Charlie and I are okay with the cool city.
Yeah. Thank you. We'll, we'll figure that out. I know you want to get this going soon and later. Yeah.
And you said it's one day a week again or once a month?
Yeah, I mean, it's, I think it depends. I mean, as, you know, as we're getting, you know, you get into a certain season and reports have to be done. My guess is they'll probably spend more time.
Yeah, like one month, it could be once a week, one, two weeks, twice a month. I mean, one, once a month is probably, even in a average, right? Oh, yeah, you're right. Like the budget season, it could be once a week.
Yeah, and I mean, I, yeah, I, and I, I won't, I won't comment on the candidates. I, there's one that I know that, that has done some similar work in the past. So actually both of them might have, I, I don't want that cool city to resumes.
So this person will be responsible for like the payroll warrants and things like that?
Yeah, they will review and sign up all of that stuff. They will do, we're actually supposed to have someone in that role verifying, like, doing the cash reconciliation, doing the, it's not a checkbook, but checkbook reconciliations, you know, making sure that the bank statements match what's in munis versus what was deposited, what was spent. So essentially that person's job is to go through and, and check all of those things and make sure that they all line up. Again, not that it hasn't been done, but it's been done by people that are all employees of the, the school, that, that same department. So people are checking coworkers' work and, you know, and verifying that this person did this or did that. And again, that was one of the first recommendations that came out from the consultants was you really need to have a third party that does this. And that, that the district treasurer role was exactly what they wanted us to.
But probably the other thing is too, a lot of stuff business manager and staff doing, that's going to be probably someone, that's going to be a, a.
Yeah, it'll be a shift, yeah.
Yeah, stuff that's probably, this oversight is going to shift to there. So that'll be a.
I mean, I've been reviewing and signing warrants at this point in time, which I mean, not ideal. But that's, if somebody stepped into that role, that would, that's a much better model for that.
And my understanding is that it's a, a role that's mandated for tech schools, right? A district treasurer?
Not just tech, I mean, it's, it's for regional schools. Yeah, regional, yeah, yeah. It is, it is something that is strongly recommended.
Public schools would have treasurer from town.
You'd have the town accountant, the town treasurer, yeah, yeah. So reg, again, regional schools being different where, where our own separate kind of entity, our own little municipality, that's, that's where that role comes in.
Has this, is this like a new law or something? Like, why did we not have one before?
I have no idea.
It's not, I don't believe it's a law.
I think it's more of a recommendation. I think it's more of a recommendation. But this is, this, so the guidance that we looked at at the last meeting is division of local standards, which is part of department revenue. And there, you know, that was the job description that I shared. It's like, this is what your district treasurer should be doing. This is, this is a role that should be placed for regional schools.
Anybody else? Okay, subcommittee report. Policy.
So the policy subcommittee, Matt, we had Andy Pidgen join us as director of admissions. We discussed our, our primary focus and almost our only focus was that we need to drastically adjust our admissions policy to shift it to a lottery program. Tony correctly said saying if you remember badly. There are a lot of restrictions, guidelines that we have to follow. So there's a lot of, we, we have very few choices in this. One thing that we can discuss, and just so you guys all know, Tony and Andy are working on a proposal that they will bring back to this policy subcommittee that then we will bring to the committee. And basically, a couple of decisions had to be made about whether or not we wanted to have a, what they call a weighted lottery. So it could be a completely blind lottery where everybody gets one, one drop in the hat and, and that's it. And there's nothing that gives you more or less. You can offer additional spots in the lottery for good attendance, for minimal discipline.
Interest.
And interest. Discipline and attendance are very generous requirements that I believe it's twenty-seven days out of school and you haven't been convicted of a felony. So more generous than we typically are, but those are, those, those are our options. And so our inclination was to follow those. And that's the guidance we gave to Tony and Andy. And then interest we discussed for a while. And interest is hard to quantify, to, we have to define it. We'd have to figure out how are they going to show interest? How are we going to verify interest? Sort of what, what does that process look like? At first glance, it was, to be blunt, a little more trouble than it's worth. It did not seem that it would give us a whole lot of benefit compared to what we would have to do to verify their interest. So for the moment, we're putting that aside. The policy subcommittee will look at it again when we look at the proposed policy. We do have to vote on that at the next meeting because we do have to present it.
November first.
November first. So it, we don't have forever to decide this. And obviously, we want to put a policy in place so that we can start the admissions process. We did discuss a little bit that part of this new procedure, policy from DESI does include that the schools are now encouraged or required.
Required.
Required to bring the kids here to Shawshank. So last year, we did presentations at three towns and the other two towns brought kids here. One of the towns has two middle school programs, so they brought both of them. This year coming, everybody's coming here. So that's a good thing. That means everybody gets to see our building. It does present some fair amount of logistics that I'm sure Tony and Andy are already working on. And have you met with the superintendents yet?
No, that's coming up. Next week or the week after, I forget when it is.
So the superintendents of our five centing towns will be given the information if they don't already have it.
Then there's actually, there's a piece that they're required to do annually now as well.
Yeah, I read that too.
Where they have to have a middle school access plan, similar, similar to our admissions policy, which again, they're supposed to file with the state. It's supposed to contain certain pieces. So as, as part of the discussion, Andy and I have also been trying to work on some resources to share with them because again, we're not, we're not quite sure how much time and energy they put into this. So we figured if we had something to say like, hey, here's a place to start, you know, here's something we, we help the others. We will share that with them when we meet.
So we do not have a formal policy to share with you at this time, but we are working on it. Am I missing anything?
No, I, I think, just to emphasize something that Taran mentioned. In theory, the interest component would be something that we really would want to delve into. But I think that under the state regs, the way they sort of mandate that you credit interest is so loose, including just attending an open house.
Watching a video.
Walking by Shawshank tack on a Saturday afternoon, pretty much.
Going to the mandated assembly that they already have to go to.
Right. It really would not be, it would not be giving us what we've gotten from the interviews and from the essays and things of that. And that's why I think even when the regulations were being discussed at DESI, there was thought, oh, well, interest will still be an issue. It almost really isn't because there isn't, there isn't much to it. And no, so I think that's why we went with the two out of the three. So ultimate ping pong balls.
All right, yes.
I went to a regional eight meetings that they, one, one of the topics they talked about was the admission policy. I'm not, but that was the question I had was more so that they, school districts, the other districts, they all know they got to put like a policy they're required to build it.
It's been coming, it's, there's been reminders coming out of the commissioners office.
Because.
Weekly, yes.
Because they were saying some of the school districts, they don't even know that they still have to do it. But they're not reading this stuff, but as long as Oz knows, you're going to pass it on.
Yes, no, they will, they will be here for an in-person meeting. I, I don't think it's next week. I think it's the following Wednesday. And that is, that is one of the topics on our agenda.
And, and will you have everybody all together also again?
I believe they're all planning to attend, yes, yeah.
Well, that's great. Yeah, that's wonderful.
New business. Superintendent Director Gold, timeline.
So coming out of, I think it was our retreat meeting on August first, we had talked about. So again, this is absolutely nothing that's installed or firmed up, but I just, just, I took the initiative and went ahead and kind of put something together for people to review and reflect on. The first page of this, we had talked about, you know, again, coming out of the, my first three years as a new superintendent, there is, there is the option to go to a two-year cycle. So what I did here is, you know, like again, September twenty-five, goals developed and approved for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. The focus indicators, again, for both years, potentially this year and next. Um, the focus indicators, again, for both years, potentially this year and next school year. December of this year, I would give an update on goals like I typically do anyways. Uh, February of this year, I would do a final submission of goals for the twenty five, twenty six school year. Um, and again, if 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 people want, I can do an update on the progress of towards those focus indicators. Um, but we wouldn't necessarily do the formal, um, collection of evidence and comments and all those other things. Um, again, March, committee to review and comment on the goals. Process would start over again next fall, September twenty six, uh, goals developed and approved for the next school year. Update on goals as well, and then February would be final submission of goals for twenty six, twenty seven. But then also the final submission for the evaluation, um, which would then trigger that March meeting, the review of goals, and then the final evaluation report. Similar to what we've done where the form is sent out, people are asked to comment on it. Um, and then we, it'll, it'll be a study at this point in time, we'll collect all those responses, um, and and report them out in that table at at the, uh, at the March School Committee meeting. Um, and then on the next page, I just went ahead, again, these are just some suggestions, um, looking at focus indicators. Um, I think most of you remember, but just as a reminder, we need at least one from each category. Um, I went through, I just selected one from each category, if there's stuff that people wanna add to this, um, if we want, if people wanna take this and come back, um, we can always look at this at a, at a, at another future meeting, I'm not sure, I'll, uh, divest to the chair on on what decision she wants to make, but. Um, so as far as instruction goes, um, the first one, one, one B, uh, one B is instruction. Again, this is, um, I think this aligns with the new role that we've created in the, on the administrative team. Supporting Jeff and his work, making sure that he's set up for success and in building, um, something that's, that's, um, sustainable. Um, we have a good foundation to move forward and to help improve that stuff, um, for years to come. Uh, fiscal systems, um, again, going through, I mean, we're going through some, some growing pains here with the budget and some other things. But again, keeping that focus on that, making sure that as we develop a budget for FY twenty seven, um, we have an eye on what our priorities are and making sure that, um, we're addressing any concerns or needs that we find. Um, again, within our, within, within the reasonable, uh, assumption of the resources we have available. Um, engagement, again, I think, I picked this one because as we, as we work our way through the MSBA feasibility study, funding phase, start to talk to families, um, we still have, um, on our radar to implement a new schedule next year. So again, engaging with families and students and having conversations about, uh, which we've already started to do, you know, what, what electives are people looking for? How are things gonna be structured? Um, you know, what are, what are our needs as far as a district and a, and a, and a school and in the building? Um, and then I think the last one kind of ties into that as well, which, you know, trying to get everybody on the same page, like, this is what the future of Shawshank's gonna look like, and here are the options that we have to get where we wanna go. Um, but again, these were, these were my ramblings, so, um, I'm more than open to suggestions, comments, changes wherever, whatever needs to happen.
Does anybody have any comments right now? I mean, in the next, you know, at any of the meetings, you can decide to bring this back, you know, as a future agen- agenda item.
Maybe pick more than four, didn't we?
I think we've done six the past couple of years, yep.
Yeah.
I gotta see that, can we, uh, gotta go back and find that document.
So.
Yeah, we, we can resend it.
Yeah, thank you.
So, all I was gonna say is I think that during the retreat, we requested that if you, when you have set your goals, that then when you have reports, you could sort of have it under, like the, you would have it under, you'd have instruction, and they list some of the things that that have happened. It just makes it easier two years down the line, right, to to then go back and and be able to assess.
So on a monthly fees, have something that they uses on.
Yeah, 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 if you're, if it's possible, cuz then it ties right into the goals directly.
I think you're already quasi, I think you're already quasi doing one.
Does that make sense? Yeah, no, I know, it's just.
No, no, I agree, the month, I'm just saying he had like, I think you were doing like a, like a semi annual or.
Yeah, but I mean, I can, I can just as easily do it on the regular committee update.
Well, what he did, I remember, since Sarah's talking about, you get, he gave a list of everything he's done, and we had to figure out where it went.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's right, right, it's just so much easier if you actually figured out where it goes, right?
I think I gave you a document with it aligned to the indicators, I don't, I don't, I don't think you had to find it on your own.
I'm not sure.
I'm gonna have to look that.
So like, you could send that out.
Yeah.
And we'll, um, and we'll go over this, um, but I think as a committee, we agreed upon which ones.
Yep.
You'd like to see, but I do like the two-year cycle.
Yep.
It makes sense. You'll see, updating the progress.
Yeah. And I apologize, I, I thought, I did have some goals developed, but, um, I must have forgot to put them in here. So I will send those to everybody as well, cuz I, I went and did develop some goals for the.
Isn't that, you have some pictures?
Okay, it's just, yeah, I'm sorry, it didn't, it didn't print in my packet.
You had proposed.
It's here, yeah, it's here.
Oh, no, I did, I, sorry, my fault, wrong file.
Okay.
Your files.
Um, do you, I mean, do people wanna look, I mean, we can easily, well, I shouldn't say easily. We could go through goals, and if people wanted to say, yes, we're on board with this, and then revisit the evaluation categories? Or do we wanna wait and do the whole thing at a future meeting?
Is anybody wanna discuss the goals right now? Or would you rather take them home, look at his suggested indicators and at the next meeting? Just bring on the next meeting.
Okay, yep.
Alright.
So the next meeting, we're gonna just determine if these are both, want to focus on.
Right, yes, and if there's something else, we're looking for something.
Prove the goals and then go through the indicators and see if this, and like, like, like Mr. Fusco had said, in the past couple of years, I think we went with six.
Yeah.
So if there's stuff that people wanna add, we could.
You don't have to have, we, we can do the whole document, you don't have to, and this first came out.
You could, yes.
Right. Oh, I know, when you saw the whole thing.
This is Patty, I'm, this is like, I mean, it's like, it's four times.
They wanna do like thirty-three of them.
They're like, I mean, yeah.
Because we had to make up answers to first.
Right, so the thing is, yeah, we picked, we picked one.
Might be helpful to have like a semi annual check in there.
Well, that's in there.
That's probably what, yeah.
There's a December report, which is what we've been doing the past few years.
Yeah, I think that's, yeah, I thought I remembered, like, you had provided, like, which is probably a good thing.
Okay. Subcommittee dates.
So again, another piece that had come out of our retreat, uh, people were asked to kind of take a look at the calendar and propose some dates so that, um, we didn't have a bunch of stuff backing up or 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 roadblocking at certain points during the school year. Um, again, this is just some, this is a draft, um, I just looked at the calendar. I did try to keep all of them on Tuesday nights, um, just for continuity, so people could plan. Um, I get as we get into budget season or we get into something else, we may have to move, you know, we may have to go to a Monday night or a Wednesday night. But again, just as kind of a, a, a rough plan or a place to start. Um, you can see there are some, you know, there are some that like, um, October seventh, they have both policy and curriculum.
So we're just.
We, we'd have to sc- you know, again, we'd have to schedule different times based on people's availability. Uh, December ninth, they had audit and organizational development. Um, so I, you know, I, I, I am trying to double up some of them, just, you know, to cut down on the number of number, uh, the number of numbers, the number of nights that we're here at the meetings.
Yeah.
Um, I started with the, uh, budget timeline from last, last spring that everybody voted on, so all of those dates are already built into here. Um, and again, you know, some of these, some of these committees obviously meet, I think policy meets three times, I think curriculum meets two or three times. Uh, some of the other, like safety and security, I think meets once or twice. Um, organizational development, I think meets once or twice. So, um, again, we can add more meetings if we need them, if something comes up, when there's something specific. But, um, I would put this forward as a proposal for, uh, our plan for the upcoming school year.
The only, the only I can see on, on the line on the budget for February the third. I'd have, I have to be somewhere seven o'clock, so it could be earlier, I'm sure everybody's, all we can move to a different day. Other than that, your list doesn't conflict with me on any of the other things on my different committees.
And if we make a motion to approve this, and then we have to change it, is that okay? Cuz like, we have a whole top, that was changed.
Yeah, we can, we can update it, right, you know, we can update it, yeah.
Well, see, I'm gonna email you guys about October seventh, cuz I got two other meetings that day, so.
Well, and I have, I have, I have one other one too, so.
You can squeeze in.
So I, I like the idea of put the dates out, I know, and, okay, rather than like, when Taran and I are going, can you make that date? Oh, I got that, I got this, I got that, and then people are like, go on crazy, so here's a date, if it has to be changed, it has to be changed.
So.
Good to have a sorry.
I think.
Work off a basis, a base.
And obviously, we need budget, a couple more budget meetings.
Probably wasn't what's there.
Yeah, there's a couple.
Charlie, I have to find it.
Yeah.
Do something.
I could talk, we'll figure out something, yeah.
Treasurer, okay.
Sure, sure.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six subcommittee dates as proposed. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Alright.
Any opposed, unanimous?
Alright, on to MSBA Building Committee. Um, again, I don't think there's any surprises here, uh, this was discussed when we met virtually, I guess, twenty eight maybe? For some reason, that date sticks in my mind. Um, I have had, since that meeting, I have had a chance to talk to Christopher Dillon, uh, who has since been appointed as the, um, full-time, um, town manager of Billerica, he is, is very excited to be part of this, and said that if it wasn't himself, it would be somebody else in his office uh, that would participate in this. Uh, Mr. Fiore wasn't at the last meeting, but I had talked to him before, he had stepped forward to be the chair of our building committee, so, um, thank you, thank you in person, Mr. Fiore.
I don't know, I'm reading up on a lot of it, I don't.
We can always change the roster if we need to. Um.
I said one question on the members, like, the other ones look fine, but like, you have, like, a member is a community, not to pick on Billerica, but I will. Why, how come Billerica's got two and Wilmington doesn't have one from the community?
Wilmington does have one.
Because Greg Bendel's listed as, as a hundred Cook Street, cuz that's where he works.
Oh, okay, that's right.
Wilmington, yeah.
Yes. No, he's really Wilmington.
I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Wilmington, yeah. And again, when I, when I had the, uh, town managers in last week, this, all of this was discussed with them as well, so they, they are aware of the people who were recommended. There was a little conversation back and forth, I know, um, Mr. Slagle from, from, um, from Wilmington had, had some conversations, but he had texted me today and said that they are fine with Mr. Bendel being, um, their representative at this time, so.
Who is he?
Who's who?
Slagle?
Slagle's the town manager in Wilmington, yeah, sorry. Um, so at this point in time, I mean, if, if, if the committee wants to vote to approve this as presented, uh, Nicole and I, um, will work tomorrow to get this, to get this submitted, um.
Sharon wants the chair to be from Wilmington?
I believe I can sign this.
I make a motion that we approve the membership of the school building committee as listed in the packet.
Second.
All those in favor?
Alright.
Any opposed, unanimous?
Tony, when would you expect the, a first meeting of the entire group here?
Um, I would say probably not until after the start of twenty twenty six. Um, as we get some more information about this, I believe they won't expect us to move forward with this until funding has been, um, finalized.
Finalized, yeah.
But I also don't think it, it may be a good idea for us to have a meeting just to get people more of a get-to-know-you kind of thing. Uh, so people can know who's on the committee and who's gonna be part of the conversations, um, but we will, we will.
Will they be notified that they were voted in tonight?
Yes, okay.
Yeah, Tony, I always gotta ask, yeah, this is what I was discussing, if, if somebody could make a distributional list of everybody's email, in our group, and then we can go put that, we'll all be there, nobody gets missed as things will flow.
So you're probably looking like after the feasibility study, right? Like after that gets funded or?
Um, I gotta look more into what their expectations are.
No, that's what I'm saying, I'm saying, yeah.
I think we may wanna start meeting before then, from the standpoint of, I mean, one of the first things that that group is charged with is hiring, or is project manager, and starting to look at who you're gonna contract with to do the feasibility study. Um, and I know MSBA has, um, approved vendors, for lack of a better term, so that group may wanna actually start going through that and looking and asking some questions about what are some similar projects? What, you know, what have other vocational schools done? Has everybody used the same O P M? Has everybody used the same, um, architectural firm? So, um, we may wanna start before that deadline, um, but I, this, I gotta do some more research on it.
But it would be the feasibility study for, or sorry, the, the town meeting would be the ones like in twenty six, basically, or the spring.
In the spring.
Right, barely.
Town.
Town, the town meetings are in the spring.
Yes.
Right, spring of twenty six, yeah.
So for some towns, it could be the first or the second.
Right, I'm sorry, yes.
Um, not to highlight Kent's observation, but Kent was wondering, you know, sort of why is Billerica overrepresented under the members? Is MSBA going to care that the majority of these people are listed as a hundred Cook Street? And I didn't know if they would look at that and be like, wait a minute, why is somebody from Billerica?
Well, I mean, they're all school employees.
I assume like some of us, if they need, should we have our personal address or something? I didn't know if that, anyone else?
They kick it back, we'll press on the bridge when we get to it.
Website content.
I don't have anything for this.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Did every, anybody have anything else about, I know we had talked something about the website, you didn't like something, what, you wanted to see more?
No, I mean, it's, no, it's not, it's not bad, it's just like, I think like you look at like, like Minutemen's, for example. If you go into their school committee and lists everything out, like, like I said, it's just their really website update to like, that's something we can take a look at and kind of see how they tailor it towards, cuz it's pretty good, like, you went there, it's all listed out, it's all, it's part of that, some of that's votes, like, so you don't have to get into this, it's like, okay, the budget gets voted, audit committee gets forked, boom, that's your vote, and then as part of that, you can just say, yes, as part of that vote, and you don't have to take a guess, getting emails from me to bug you to other crap that's already being posted, and then this information that's, you know, if it's like public meeting or, you know, I know Patty loves to get minute requests, but there's probably somebody else that could be better, you know, to, so it's just more like information, making sure documents are posted, so it's just, it's helped to avoid confusion and make sure people are having, so it's like, you're not wasting time, you're not having, so I think it's just a, so I think, I think Minutemen's got a pretty good setup, I think that's something we should look to maybe, not completely near, but like, just use it as a template.
We did a little research into that one, have you tried to click through theirs?
Yeah, I went through it.
The, the forward-facing part of it, I, I think is nice, and it's, it's a nice graphical representation, but like, when you're trying to dig for meeting minutes, it's like five or six clicks.
Yeah.
You have to go from, from one minute to the next.
Oh, I'm not saying, yeah, I'm saying like you, like more like the template, like, yeah, behind the scenes, like, what's your, like, have the documents correctly, but I'm saying it'd be good to kind of have.
I can also ask, so we, we just migrated to a new vendor for this. Um, I mean, I can, I can go ask some questions about what, like, options we have for the setup of that.
Yeah.
I know, uh, we're, when we're designing the homepage, um, I mean, one of my priorities was I wanted shops front and center. So when you go to it, you know, they're, they're like the first thing that you see, so, um, I can, I can ask, I don't know if we can make different sections formatted in different ways, but, um, I, I can find out some more information.
Coach, who maintains our website right now?
So, um, it's, it's done under the Ed Tech Department, but Greg Bendel does, uh, the lion's share of the updating and the posting and all the stuff that's on. Yes, decision.
I do agree with Kent, like, clearly, we've gotten a lot of questions about our transparency, so be as transparent as we, we can. Um, on the other side of not the school committee, I know that's what we're looking at as the, but as the parent side of the, of the website, it's a little rough for us to navigate, I'm not gonna lie, I've heard it a lot. Even lunch, it's not simple to find lunch, and lunch is not even updated, so.
That's true.
It's been rough, like, people have said that to me a lot, like, this isn't the easiest to navigate, I've done the same. Yeah, it's been a little, and, and lunch, I mean, that's what they all go on for, right? And, and that hasn't, that's not easy to find, and it's not updated, so just.
Well, thank you for the feedback, 'cause I was not.
Yeah, and my issues, those are all updated, right?
Yeah, I know, so.
Yeah, okay. Yes.
I will say that I, you know, no longer being a parent at school, I'm pretty limited in what I look for on the website. Um, and for the most part, you know, like, when I wanna find our agenda or I wanna find our packet, I actually find it easier to find than some other places that I've looked, I think I was looking at Billerica, and, you know, trying to hunt down the packet was a little bit of a challenge, trying to hunt down, I mean, I still cannot find a link to go to their Zoom meeting for Shaw, for Billerica's Blackboard, I can find it like listed in a PDF that I can't click on, still can't like find a clickable link, so, you know, there, there are things we're doing right, I will say that.
So Patty?
Yes.
So, so, um, at our last meeting, I didn't understand that it was just the school committee that you wanted us to look at that page. So I had sent you, Tony, a whole list of various things that were, that needed to be updated, and I- So I had sent you, Tony, a whole list of various things that were, that needed to be updated, and I remember lunch was, was one of them. So this time, I actually went into the, the Minuteman Tech, that's the only one I looked at, the school committee page. And there were two things that, um, they have that we don't have, and one was the bios of school committee members. So that when you have a name, then you sort of have some kind of background information, whether that's something, you know, we wanna do or not. And the other one is that, um, we definitely have budget information on there, but they included their audits. So that would be also something to consider, and those were the only two things that jumped out at me, because I think that we have the same information, it's just sort of set up in a different kind of way. Um, and, yeah, there's this kind of glitzy with all those little button things, you know, yeah, and you go to that, but I, I found ours, you know, once I said, oh, it's the same information, it's sort of, you just go down a list, yeah.
It's almost like the, like, not to say we aren't being transparent, but some people love that, but not gonna comment on that, but this, but basically it makes your job easier if it's a financial.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's like you have approval and automatically, you know, get posted to the, it's just, then people can't say, well, we're done, or it's like, well, go website, yeah.
And the minutes had been posted on that, that one page that I really like also, up until like May or something, I don't know, they're probably up to date now, I haven't looked, but it, it's a really nice page, the way we have it set up, because you can just go right across, um, and the packet's on there, and thank you, yeah, it's great.
Based on the current climate, not to make Nicole's job more difficult, but if it is a video, then it's already out there, you post it, and then you can say, well, you know, it's there, then you can, you don't like it, you can say, well, there's public record.
And thanks, I did my homework.
You guessed the two pages, you guessed dining room, it's, it's still cleaning that up.
I know, I know there's some, some pieces of that that they're still working through, and the guest dining room, I think, only opened last week, so my guess is.
Yeah. Yes, I was talking about that, I think just,
Yeah.
So I like the, I like the format, things are still traveling over.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, they're trying to get the menus up online and stuff, it doesn't.
Yeah. And, and I think we have a similar thing with the cafeteria as well, you know, coming back and getting that program, you know, it's been, um, there's, there's been some technical difficulties.
Yes, I know, I mean, do you feel, do people feel this,
When is the staff in the caf?
As a committee, do you feel it's user-friendly? I think it's better. I know, I mean, yes, overall, I mean, you wanted the shops up front, click on, there you go, I mean, this is, it is what it is.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I mean, I go on there to find the things I need.
Yeah, school committee started budgets, I know I'm saying, Sarah, to give your point, yeah, budgets, audits, things that people might wanna look at, you know?
So again, if that, I mean, again, if that is what the committee, I mean, we can, Nicole and I can work on getting that updated, um, and I can try to find out if, if there's a way to format that section a little bit differently, but, I mean, if, if, if we're looking for budget and audit documents, I mean, I know, we have at least the last three years, I know that.
Well, I can, I can map out based on a couple other schools and send it out to people and see what the, I mean, I, I'm not saying Minutemen's perfect, I'm just saying, it's, it's, and, and believe, I understand what you're saying, you kinda, you start poking around, and, but it's maybe come up with a list and share with you and Nicole and everybody else can take a look, and then we can say, that crap, throw it out, this is good, because that'll kind of maybe point out like a couple of points why that would be helpful, because looking, well, maybe not three, no, because that's like, maybe you love you and me, and we can figure out what's the best, of course, and there, and again, the, the stuff that we have is actually pretty good, it's just like, yeah, my things, I know you love people, you know, you love public records, you're friends with all that crap, but, but, if they don't, they'll probably hate you. So I can, I can send some out for the next meeting if we're gonna do that.
Yeah, fine, do that for us.
I'll leave Patty off.
We'll send it out and see what everybody says.
We'll send it to Patty, the rest will still get it.
Gosh. It seems like we're hav- we're having a sound problem, is it?
I should have a text. Did you get an email?
We, we got an anonymous update. Oh, it's bad, Josh. Must have been a glitch, thank you. Somebody cut out again and then come back, I just needed it, I deleted it. Thank you.
Well, okay, you would've got an email.
Okay, I'm not looking at my email.
Capital budget update.
Uh, so in the packet, um, I did have Mary Rubio pull, uh, I believe it was Mr. Fusco had asked for this.
Yeah, just wanted to see, um, thank you, Tony, to see where we're at
Yep.
on the capital budget, pro- uh, projects.
So if we go through this, so, uh, academics, um, eighty thousand dollars for classroom furniture, science lab updates, other things like that. Um, if you look at this report, we spent a little over sixteen thousand dollars to date. Um, I know there are plans in the works to spend the rest of this. Um, again, it's just something that, um, we're kind of backing our way into to start the school year, and I'm sure there'll be more updates on that as we go. Um, athletics, the, uh, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, the, the two fifty is to finish the, um, uh, fieldhouse facilities out by the football field, um, that was the money that we had voted to, um, reallocate, it was originally earmarked for the, uh, the pool pack, um, which we pushed till next fiscal year and decided to do this this year. The thirty thousand dollars is the, uh, replacement of, um, the scoreboard in the gymnasium, and I believe the shot clock and some other stuff. Um, I know that they've been getting quotes on that, I don't think a PO has been issued yet, but, um, I know they've been making progress on the replacement scoreboard. Um, autumn.
And I'm gonna interrupt you.
Yep.
Does anybody see in the tennis courts?
Yeah, they're all.
You gotta take a look at the tennis court, it's gorgeous.
Purple and they look so good, yes.
Yeah.
But I was a little nervous about that color, when I'm like, does purple and green go together? I'm like.
I like it. I, I like it.
But it looks good, it does, it does look good.
It does.
Okay.
Um, automotive has already purchased, um, that was, that was for a, a toolbo- a toolbox, um, for the underclassmen area, that's already been purchased. Um, we budgeted twelve thousand two hundred dollars, it actually came in a little bit less than that, so that is, is taken care of. Um, the fixed cost, which is the bond payment for, uh, the sports field, the athletic fields, um, the interest is actually a little bit higher than what we had budgeted for, and again, I'm not quite sure why, but, uh, you'll see that that's running a deficit of forty five hundred dollars, um, and that was because the interest payment was higher than what we had anticipated. Um, the safety budget, again, we've been spending, we've been spending stuff out of that, we've done a lot with signage, um, fire extinguishers, fire blankets, other things like that, as we've been going through the shop areas, we've been trying to make sure that everything is up to date, um, and that we have everything in those areas as required. Cafeteria, it, it's not reflected on this, but there is a PO pending for a, uh, reach-in cooler, um, for the caf area, again, with the free lunch program, uh, we've obviously seen a significant increase in the number of meals that are, are processed and, and, um, purchased and or given to students, so they had a need for another cooler. Um, that should show up on this probably by the next meeting that we have. Uh, carpentry is money in here, both for some staging equipment and some replacement of, of some of their, um, scaffolding and other things, plus uh, money to install, uh, two slabs, uh, which will go up on the hill, up behind where the tennis courts are. That will be, we'll actually be able to have a mock house dedicated to the tenth grade class, which we're looking at doing a one-story lower structure for kids to get used to working off ladders and other things. And then we'll also be able to continue to do the two-story junior project, um, and they will be up there, they'll be side by side, so we'll be able to, to work through that. In the future, um, cosmetology, um, again, that money was budgeted for an intercom system for them, similar to the one, if you come in through culinary, uh, when you push the buzzer outside, if, if there's a camera within culinary, they can see who it is, they can have a conversation, they can let people in. Um, culinary, uh, excuse me, cosmetology asked for the same thing. Um, you will notice that there's a negative encumbrance there, I was told that that was because, um, some POs got processed, um, that should have been FY twenty five, but they came in over the summer, so they are working to clean that up. Um, and that available budget balance is a true reflection of what's there for them to spend, and that the twenty, the twenty-five thousand dollars should come off this, um, once all of that stuff is reconciled with the last fiscal year. Uh, culinary, um, this was the grease trap replacements and all of the plumbing work that was done in there. Um, that is done now, um, we did, um, pretty much blow through all of the, uh, all of the money in that account, um, between labor, to have, we had two of our staff members work over the summer down there, and then all of the materials and everything to make those installations, but, um, if you'd ever been in that kitchen in the past, um, grease traps don't smell great. Um, and the way that that was set up and the age of them and the, uh, the covers on them really weren't sealing correctly anymore. Um, so there was times that that program had a really foul odor to it. Um, they are ecstatic, um, they don't have to fill the sinks full of water anymore, there's all kinds of things that, that, you know, it's, it's actually doing what it's supposed to. Um, so they are, they are very happy with the outcome of that project down there. Um, computer services, again, this is the IT department, we did a bunch of upgrades with access points, we added some access points, we did some work with security cameras, we upgraded the, uh, badge system for people to get in and out of the building. Um, so if you, if, if you look at this report, it, it is deficits spent at this point in time, but we are expecting E-rate reimbursement, so E-rate is money that they charge, um, technology and internet companies, and then they give back to schools and libraries and other, and other public facilities, but we have to pay for the project upfront and then submit the information to get the reimbursement, so, um, we are actually expecting to get back more than we spent. Um, so that, that negative number should balance out and should be reflected as we move forward. Uh, graphics, again, this was some upgrades and some stuff in the shop, um, which we have not started yet. Uh, realistically, this may be something that we leave towards the end of the school year, just because we have students and staff and they're working now, and it's, it's hard to necessarily work around them. Um, LPN, this is, um, both the health and medical assisting requests. So the health department's purchasing some more beds to replace, we kind of have an ongoing cycle, I think every five years, um, we've replaced all of them, and then we start over again down there. Those beds are used by our day students and our LPN program, uh, so they, they do get a lot of usage. Um, and then the other piece for this, this year, um, out of the LPN revolving account, we're also purchasing, uh, I believe it's a pregnancy simulator for the medical assisting program, which is a pretty significant investment. Um, I think it was about twenty-two thousand dollars that, um, was spent on that, which is something that they don't currently have in that program. Uh, building fund, again, this is, this is under the guise of our, uh, direct facilities. These are, um, I believe some, um, unevent and heat replacements, some other things around the building, the HVAC systems. Um, we haven't started to spend that down yet. The nurses' office, there is money in here, uh, to, uh, look at redesigning that nurses' suite down there, um, and, and basically trying to take a, a fresh look at the space we have and trying to reconfigure that so that it's more, uh, more of a, uh, urgent care, minute, minute clinic kind of layout. Um, so that, you know, again, we can get kids in and out quickly, um, there's spaces for kids that need, you know, need to sit or lay down for a period of time. Um, but structuring it in a way that we don't have a big catchment area right when you come in the door, um, we can kind of screen kids a little bit more efficiently and, and make sure we're, we're sending them in the direction that they need to go. Uh, phys ed, um, this was the, um, uh, replacement of the two showers in the, um, fitness center, um, this actually came in significantly under budget based on what we thought it was gonna cost to do this, so, um, we will probably have some equipment money there that, again, the budget subcommittee can make some recommendations about what they wanna do with and where they wanna move it moving forward. Uh, and then last but not least, plumbing, uh, has, uh, in the capital budget, a scissor lift. Um, I did see the, uh, three quotes came through my office for that the other day, and I believe the PO is, if it hasn't been issued, it will be issued in the next couple of days. Uh, and I think they spent all, what, about nine hundred bucks, um, of what they had allocated.
Yes, so, um, just to make sure, the caf is left the oven, the larger oven?
No, not yet, she bu- she started with the, the reach-in cooler.
Okay, I would.
In talking to Pauline, she said that some of that stuff on there was outdated for some reason. Um, but we, we did buy the reach-in, and then she, she has, yeah, she wanted that, she said that was her priority. And then we'll look at the other stuff, uh, as we get into.
So, let's see what that costs.
Uh, I don't, I don't actually know.
We go to seventy-six hundred, so that, that was not spent.
Not yet, but I know, I know she's in the process for it.
Well, the cooler, we don't, we'll find out what that costs, I guess, and then if I understand, the pool pack was put on hold.
We pushed that to FY twenty seven, that'll be on next year's capital.
Okay, okay, sounds good.
SRO and mental, social and emotional health support personnel, they need it for update.
Yeah, so, um, this is something that, that came, uh, came through my office in the spring, uh, or actually shouldn't be this, I should say spring, the end of last school year. Um, we are required to report to the Department of Education, uh, cost for, the number and cost for SROs, um, proposed budget for mental, social and emotional health support personnel, and then also we're supposed to report school-based arrests, so all of that stuff was submitted earlier this year. Um, the one piece that I missed in this, it's also supposed to be reported to the school committee as well, so this is my reporting out of what we sent to them. Um, so if we go through this, the, uh, cost for the SRO, uh, in this year's budget, ninety-six thousand one hundred and nine dollars. Um, that may change, again, we have a, we have a different staff member in that role, I'm not sure if that'll go up or down based on, um, what his background and, um, and pay scale is. Uh, requirement two, again, this is a list of all of the people that, that we count as mental, social or emotional health support within the building. Includes nurses' office, guidance counselors, adjustment counselors, social workers. Um, and again, you can see that the bottom total there based just on salaries, we spend about one point seven million dollars a year um, on providing those supports to our students and making sure, again, some of these things are, um, our accommodations, they're stipulated on E, on IEPs or in five oh four plans. Uh, some of these are just, you know, some of our guidance counselors, um, meeting kids about college applications and next steps and, um, other things, and so it's, it's, it's a wide variety of different people that we have, but this represents, um, all the people in the building. And then the last one here, um, we had zero school-based arrests, citations or school referrals made in the previous school year, so, um, that is not how we u- utilize our SRO and, and philosophically, I don't think that's ever what we wanna do here, so.
Is that zero typical?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, so as we had started last year, uh, I am bringing grants forward for the committee, the committee needs to vote to accept the grants and, um, allow us to, to move forward with, um, uh, coming up with a, with a spending plan for them. So these are the ones that have been released to date, um, so we have the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, the IDEA Act, um, four hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars is what we've been allocated. The Strengthening Career Technical Education for the Twenty First Century Act, or the Perkins Five, uh, one hundred and sixty-two thousand, ninety-five dollars. Um, Title One, um, basic grants to ELA, uh, to E, LEAs, sorry, I don't know why I tripped over that one. Um, and again, that, that number keeps going up for us, that is money to support our, um, English as a second language population, so we're looking at a hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars for this upcoming school year. Um, Two A, uh, Supporting Effective Instruction, um, we typically use some of that money for our mentor program to help support that program and to, and to pay the, the, not the, the new teachers, but the people that are mentoring them, um, out of that, so it's twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars. And then, uh, Title Four, Student Support and Academic Enrichment, um, is ten thousand, uh, for a grand total of seven hundred and fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars.
Is it, um, more or less?
It's, it's in line with what we have, we, I think Perkins is up a little bit, the other ones I think are pretty much, pretty much where they were before.
Do we vote to approve them and then discuss what we're doing with it, or do you have plans for all of it already?
We have, they very strictly regulate what you can spend it on, um, so our grants, our grants manager will go through that, and she'll come, she'll come back and say, here's the things that we can do with this, um, and then, again, the leadership team usually looks at that and says, okay, you know, these are, these are the priorities that we wanna target. Um, the IDEA one, we typically use to offset salaries, uh, in support services, uh, or paras, depending upon what it looks like from year to year, so that's typically where that one gets allocated for. Perkins, we use for equipment. Um, I believe our tar- our target this year for Perkins, if you look at the capital budget, is new computers for graphics, um, engineering, and I'm missing one, there's a third one, we have, uh, ISM, excuse me, um, so we're looking at spending, uh, a good chunk of that money in buying updated technology for those three programs.
Make a motion that we accept five grants for a total of two hundred and fifty, seven hundred and fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and ninety.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous, come.
I will say, I just like this format, Nicole, I don't know if you, like, it's, it's really helpful seeing everything this way, and not, in. I don't know if you like, it's really helpful seeing everything this way and, and in one document.
Oh, yeah, I did kind of like that.
I appreciate that.
Okay. Executive session.
Mr. Agenda item.
Oh, I did? Oh, future agenda, I'd say. Future agenda items.
I just want to make a, a note for the record that this treasurer thing, it's actually law. It's under Chapter 71, Section 16A.
Nope.
That's what I thought it was.
71, 16A.
Yeah. So I just want to make sure everyone's aware of that.
So do we want to invite everybody in down the road? Yeah.
Tommy?
So I'm actually curious what Jeff McGrath's job will be or is. I mean, as, I, it's a new job, I totally understand, but, and maybe you all discussed it last year in terms of a new role, but I would just at some point really love to hear what he's doing.
Do you want me to respond about that now? Or you want to consider the future agenda?
Is it too early to have him come here the next time?
No, we can, I can absolutely ask him to do this.
Where I'm concerned.
I would say that I miss him as a teacher.
He was a fantastic teacher.
He was easily my daughter's favorite teacher.
Favorite. And we, I think we were set up to have him again this year and now, so we're.
Well, that job was, Stacy, that job was created, somebody told us. Right, because we made some changes in the administrative.
Structure.
Structure, yes, yeah.
And I believe you told me of 40 people applying or something like that.
Uh, yeah, it was 30, I know it was 30, so we had a lot.
I mean, I, I think Jeff is a great candidate and if we can promote him then, why not? So the other thing I had in my mind, Tony, is the, we've outsourced the PR, you said.
Yep.
So how's that?
That is going well. I have, I have a meet, I have a standing meeting with them every two weeks. And again, I don't think it's a secret here, Greg Bendel is very involved in, in updating the website content. He knows a lot of stuff around school social media, so Greg has actually been brought into those meetings. So Greg is now part of that and working with the team. We have a, a social media strategist is her title. Don't ask me what that means, but she works directly with us. She's actually the one that, that gave me the co-op graphic and has done some other stuff. They're pushing out today, there was, I don't know how many of you were on LinkedIn. There was an alumni profile that I pushed out on LinkedIn.
I saw that.
I think it was 2007 grad, 2009 grad, something like that. So they've picked up all of that stuff. They are also really kind of the driving force behind the new newsletter. They've, they've, they've helped us come up with a plan for, this is our theme for October. This is our theme for November. This is our theme for December. And they've also been working very closely with us on getting the message out about the feasibility study vote, the importance for that. So they are really, I've been very impressed with the things that they've done to date and everything that we've asked them to step up and do, they've, they've taken care of. So I, I think it's going well.
How are they finding the alumni that they're spotlighting?
So the Alumni Association actually kind of has their own network to do some of that stuff. I was, I was, I was informed today that some of the pictures that have been provided were a little less than school appropriate. So I think, I think they're navigating their way through who submits what and what gets posted. So, yeah, hopefully we don't have any issues with that moving forward.
Exactly. The Facebook exposure is, is awesome.
Yeah.
And the Twitter.
Yeah.
Our messages.
And Instagram, I think.
Instagram. Those of you that have looked at that newsletter, she also, she, and the woman's name is Megan. Megan pulls those, like, what is the most responses that get on each feed? So if you look at the bottom of that newsletter, there's like the five most popular posts for the last month. You know, like one, one of them was the new staff. There was one on there about kids coming back in the building. It was sports tryouts. So she'll go in and she'll pull, like, 12,000 people looked at this post. You know, so many of them clicked through it, so many of them liked it, which is also helpful for us because then it helps us as we go forward. It's like, okay, these are the messages that are getting to, you know, the people that we want and we should do more of this and maybe less of that.
So you're doing this monthly news?
Yep.
And Jess Cook is still doing her weekly?
Yeah. Jess is, Jess is, and she's been sending them weekly. I mean, it's just, it's just been busy for the start of the school year. But Jess's plan is to, unless it's something that's really time-sensitive, she, she's going to start kind of putting her content into that newsletter too. Guidance had one that they were doing kind of independently. So we're, we're trying to pull together Guidance's newsletter, Jess's updates, and then kind of this more school or district vibe. And again, it's, I think we've done two so far, so it's, it's definitely in its infancy. But I'm, I'm optimistic that this'll, this'll really take off and, and help get us some additional exposure.
Was this in the budget?
This was, so we had originally looked at, there was some supply money that the previous director of communications had put in. So it doesn't cover the whole thing, but it should cover a majority of that. And again, that's one of the things that we'll talk about in budget to see where we have money to try to cover that.
Yes.
So this isn't for the next meeting, but for the one after? It's sort of always ruminating in the back of my head, but we haven't really formalized it. I'd love it if the six of us that are going to the conference, while at the conference, touch base with each other and make a plan to have like a bit of a formal presentation to the rest of the committee. You know, that maybe each of us just says, you know, I'm talking a minute, I'm not talking an hour. You know, this is one thing I learned or this is one tidbit of information that I wanted to make sure is shared. Because I know, I think about it afterwards, I'm like, I, I took in so much information, I, I don't even know what to talk about. So it's like if we sort of agree ahead of time, then we can sort of have that in our heads so we know, okay, you know. As I'm, as I'm at the conference, I'm thinking about what do I want to share.
Yeah.
Do that at the November meeting?
Yes.
Can you do the PowerPoint?
I'm not calling.
So do we send your updates for you to put together the PowerPoint?
If you want, I do a PowerPoint of my new computer. Use it, but you know, I'll do my best.
I said one question about, you know, don't need to chat on it, but it will. It used to be a business manager update, what's the plan going forward? I mean, not to highlight it, but it will be on the website. Did that ding down the, you know, do for like budgets to actual, like what that actually, because it, you know, really shouldn't be, you're involved, but, but it's like a.
So I will, I will put that back to this group. So as part of that contract, we can have them here for school committee meetings. This first one, I wasn't really sure. I guess, I mean, again, I brought, I brought the year-to-date update. I mean, if, if that's what people want, we can plan on having them attend future meetings. If people would, I mean, if people prefer that I bring the information, if, if, you know, again, you want to give me some direction or some, some guidance on what you want at each meeting, I can always bring that and provide that as part of mine. It's, it doesn't matter anymore.
Is everybody thinking?
Personally, I don't see a need to have somebody else here quite yet.
That's how I kind of think.
Hey, Gray, man, I want the information, but where it's a whole situation is, you know.
That's fine, Tony, let your door is.
In flux.
All right, so we have also the website content we're all supposed to review.
I will get an answer about whether we can.
Okay.
Format that section a little bit different. And then also we have.
The mission's policy.
Yeah. And then also the goals and.
Oh, yes, the goals.
Is out.
Yeah.
And there's no update on the internal audit or the student activity fund? I mean, nobody's going to ask it, so I'll ask it.
Yeah.
Everybody knows I'm awkward.
Those, those are, those are ongoing. So the, we are currently in the process of doing the FY25 end-of-year report, which is essentially closing the books and, and getting everything accounted for, documented, whatever term you want to use. So that's currently going on. The FY25 audit won't start until that's done, so that's kind of a gatekeep for that. I've been in conversation about also starting E and D as well. So E and D will actually be done by somebody different at TMS. It won't be the person that's assigned to be here, so it actually won't take away from his time or, this to his or her time in the building with us. So we're working on that. The Student Activities Fund has been, we've sent them stuff. They requested more stuff. So I, I actually had talked to Mary Rubio yesterday, yesterday, yesterday's Tuesday. I talked to Mary Rubio yesterday about that. And she said that she had, she had responded to the last request they had. They are currently going through all of that stuff. And I'm, I'm sure we're going to get more requests like, hey, send us this, or we need, you know, we need documentation of this or we want backup to that file.
I have a question, who's doing that?
It's C-Biz is doing that as well. Yeah. Yeah.
Because when they used to do audits, they'd come in and sit there and just hand it to them.
Yep.
So C-Biz doesn't come in?
It does not appear that way. So C-Biz had told us that this was something that really fitted into the timeline. They're going to do it over the summer, blah, blah, blah. That, again, hasn't seemed to happen. In talking to some people at other schools, everybody has had similar experiences with C-Biz, where they're typically three to six months behind on everything that they promise. But the only problem is they've pretty much absorbed everybody else that was doing that type of work.
That's right, everybody, yeah.
Um, so there's, there's not a lot of other choices out there. So I'm not, I mean, I think this is our last year with them, I think the, the contract we had. So we may want to relook at that, but I, I don't think we're alone, I guess, is maybe what I'm trying to say based on what I've heard from some of us. Yeah.
So basically you're waiting on the, the student activity fund's different, but like you're waiting on for this year's audit can start?
The, the end-of-year report has to be completed first. That's like the first.
That's supposed to be, doesn't it?
I think it's October 30th. Yeah.
They haven't provided any timeline as far as the internal audit, like when that's going to start? Like they haven't provided any.
Well, that, that's part of, so as they're going through and doing the end-of-year report, they're also looking at all the account structures, how payroll is set up, how things are budgeted. So it's, they're, they're kind of in parallel. It's not like they're doing one and then stopping and doing the other one. So I, I know it's in progress. You know, I have, I, I have conversations with them every week about where they are and what they're working on and, and what's next. But, yeah, it's, it takes time.
Yeah, because I mean, I just, for the financial of the school, we're kind of.
Yeah, I, I'd love, I'd love to know.
Paying two masters here in, in the, so I think that's the other part of is, what's the next steps as far as like what we do? I know we're all pocketing what you're asking. This, this TMS isn't coming cheap. So like every month that we continue to go, you're paying both sides of the fence. We need to find a long-term solution.
Did you want to say anything?
I'm waiting.
That's giving me like.
You're the go-to.
Okay. Now I can. Well, the first bullet, we are not doing, because we do not have an update.